Half a day, good morning. Thank you everyone for being here. The Committee on Education, Air Transportation, and Statistics Research and Planning will now convene this public hearing. Today is Thursday, February 6, 2020, and it is currently 10:08 in the morning. For the record and in accordance with open government law, public notices were sent out via email to all stakeholders, senators, and main media broadcasting outlets on January 28, 2020, and the second notice on February 3, 2020. Notice of today's public hearing was also available on the Guam Legislature's website, and I'd like to thank Senator Clint Regel for being here today, joining us. Thank you, Senator. And what we have today is the discussion on Bill Number 232-35. And then after that discussion, we will move into the roundtable hearing to discuss Bill 196-35. So at this time, I would like to call up those who would like to testify on Bill Number 232-35. And just so the audience knows, Bill Number 232-35 is an act to amend items A and B of subsection 715, parentheses 1, parentheses 13 of chapter 7, title 1, Guam Code annotated relative to defining the 180 instructional days equivalent for Guam Public Schools and requiring the Superintendent of Education to develop a standard operating procedure for the arrangement of lost instructional time. So, Mr. Superintendent, any members of the board, anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of the Bill 232-35? And I'd also like to thank my colleague, Senator Amanda Shelton, our Legislative Secretary. Thank you for joining us. She's also the Vice Chair on Education. Superintendent, so I'll just let you take it over and perhaps just introduce everyone, and then you can guide the rest of the panel on who will be speaking first.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
All right. Good morning, half a day. Thank you, Vice Speaker and members of the committee. I'm joined today by our Chairwoman, Ms. Maria Gutierrez, to my left, and to my right by Mr. John Birch of the Guam Education Board. To the far left, in the event that there are any questions and clarifications, are Deputy Superintendent Kelly Sokola, as well as Deputy Superintendent Joe Sanchez. I'm going to go ahead and yield to our Board Chairwoman to begin the testimony. Thank you. And I believe we provided copies both of hers and my testimony as well.
Half a day, Madam Vice Speaker, Senator Amanda Shelton, and Senator Clint Regel. My name is Maria Gutierrez. I am the Guam Education Board Chairwoman. Our testimony this morning will be testimony on Bills 232-35 and 196-35. Thank you, Sisus Massey, for the opportunity to testify before you today on behalf of the Guam Education Board regarding Bill 232-35 and Bill 196-35. Bill 232-35 would amend Public Law 34105 to clarify that at least 900 instructional hours are required for students, both in the elementary and public secondary education each school year. Bill 232-35 would also require that the Superintendent develop a standing operating procedure to make up for the loss of instructional hours in the event of emergencies or natural disasters. The Guam Education Board supports passage of Bill 232-35. And thank you, Vice Speaker Nelson, for introducing the legislation following the request of the Guam Education Board, as set forth in Board Resolution 2019-10 passed last August 2019. Board Resolution 2019-10 recommended the clarification of instructional time that is contained in Bill 232-35 and reflects the agreed language proposed by the Joint Board Union Calendar Committee, which is comprised of the Guam Department of Education Management and representatives of the Guam Federation of Teachers. This clarification will help ensure that students receive the necessary instructional time to promote academic achievement while also giving the Superintendent flexibility to address any interruption of instructional time due to typhoons, utility outages, or other unforeseen situation. We urge the Legislature to pass Bill 232-35. A copy of the resolution is attached, which I think I will stop there, Vice Speaker, because the next one will be the Bill 135. Thank you, Vice Speaker, for engaging with us and working on solution for our education community. We ask for your continued support and your colleagues, and hope that the bills being heard today will move forward for an affirmative vote by the Legislature soon. Sisus Massey, Maria Gutierrez.
And joining us as well from the board is Member John Birch.
Thank you, Mrs. Gutierrez. Mr. Birch, good morning.
Yes. Good morning, Speaker Nelson, Secretary Shelton, and Senator Regel. My name is John Birch. I'm a member of the Guam Education Board, and I'm here today to express my support of Bill 232-35 as written. I feel that this bill resolves the issues that we identified in the scheduling of instructional time for the Department of Education by eliminating these discrepancies caused by Public Law 34105. Once again, thank you for allowing me this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Birch. Mr. Superintendent?
Okay. Madam Chair, so I'm going to go ahead and focus in on, I think, what I think is important, just understanding the history of this particular issue. But again, I'm here to testify in support of the bill. As Chairwoman noted, it did come as a request from the board to you to see if you could pass this clarifying amendment in order for us to all be on the same page with regard to the instructional hour requirement in our school system. As you recall, the Public Law 2845, otherwise known as the Every Child is Entitled to an Adequate Education Act, requires that GDOE provides students with at least 180 instructional days. And so that was the original language in the law that was passed. When Guam was preparing to host the Festival for the Pacific Arts in 2016, a Public Law 33-31 was then passed to make a change requiring at least 180 instructional days, or its equivalent, in order to provide DOE with the flexibility to adjust the school calendar in order to end the school year earlier than originally planned in order for us to accommodate that particular festival here on Guam. And with that, we've been operating with that general language, you know, 180 days or its equivalent. Public Law 34-105 was the first effort to clarify what that definition meant. What was the equivalent? You know, what did that equivalent mean? By converting the instructional days into instructional hours, requiring that elementary students receive no less than 900 instructional hours per year, and that secondary students receive no less than 1,260 instructional hours per year. However, upon further discussion and feedback, it became clear to us that in the calculations for secondary, which was really meant to reflect current practice, that the lunch hour might have been included in that calculation. So after further review, DOE Administration and the Guam Federation of Teachers agreed that a further amendment was needed and worked together through the Joint Board Union Calendar Committee to come up with the recommendations for the board to correct the language and reflect a requirement of 900 instructional hours for both elementary and secondary students alike. And in response, the Guam Education Board then passed Board Resolution 2019-10 recommending those changes, which are now found in the bill before you. So based on this history and the collaborative discussion between DOE, the Guam Federation of Teachers, and the board, we are here to just testify in support of the bill and recommend its earliest passage by the committee and the full Legislature. And thank you for your support of our efforts and our request.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Do you have any questions for Senator Regel? Do you have any questions? No? Okay, so just a little to add on to the history of it. We did have another hearing prior to this to discuss some of the changes. It was a roundtable, I believe, to discuss some of the changes in the resolution that was initially submitted. And so now the bill is reflecting 900 instructional hours to ensure that the students get the, I guess, trained to standard, right? And so, and to time. So now we are solidifying that. Can you just speak a little bit about the benefits, other than the FestPAC impacts, other benefits that our students will receive from the transition from 180 calendar days to 900 instructional hours?
Well, there's, I think there's two benefits. One was that there's, I think, further clarity has been provided in really looking at the number of hours provided, because as you know, when you say a day, that doesn't necessarily tell you when school starts, when it stops. And so I think there was some, a part of our, you know, as part of our discussion, there was an agreement that we should be a little clearer so people know what we mean when we say 180 days or its equivalent. And so coming into a calculation of hours, instruction hours, that's, it makes it clear what we mean instead of an ambiguous term. And number two, when it comes to making up, we can actually now break the day into, you know, so if a school misses an hour, we know how to make up an hour, and we can calculate and make policy and determinations that way. The second issue is that when the 180 days was amended to provide both, you know, to provide that flexibility, it's given us an opportunity to work with the Guam Federation of Teachers and with the board to adjust our calendar so that we're able to build in professional development, more professional development days into the school calendar. So where we were, so I think right now, is it, Joe, nine? So now we're able to provide nine opportunities for professional development throughout the school year, and then we're able to use those professional development days in the event that we need to make up, as make-up days. And so part of that meant that we had to adjust some of the school, you know, the day, the hours, you know, in terms of the school day, but we were able to build a calendar, you know, working with the GFT that enabled us to provide more opportunities for teachers to get together and really work on improving their collaboration and focusing on strategies for improvement. So both, you know, not only did it clarify, you know, how we should be looking at instructional time, but also allowed us to be more creative and innovative with our calendar to support our teachers. And so, as you know, that flexibility gets revisited every time the Calendar Committee gets back to propose the next year's calendar. So we're in the middle of that discussion right now to propose the calendar for the next two school years. And so it's important that we're on the same page with our union, and then it's also important that we're able to have the flexibility to meet those professional development goals as well as make up days in light of any emergencies or natural disasters.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you for being here, everyone from DOE and the board. Mr. Superintendent, can you just walk us through how it works right now for the arrangement for the make-up days, how you decide on make-up days? Because I understand it is from the recommendation of the board for you to create these procedures, but what is happening now?
So, so right now, what happens in the process of building the calendar is that the representatives of the Guam Federation of Teachers and representatives of GDOE management will get together and work on a calendar. What, that calendar has to be put together within the parameters set forth by the 180-day requirement, now the instructional hour requirement, as well as the restriction on when we can implement make-up days. So along with the 180-day equivalent change, there was also a change in that same bill to restrict us from making up days during the Christmas or Easter breaks. So while that restricted us in terms of using the use of make-up days during those periods of time, we do have flexibility elsewhere in the calendar to build in the potential need for make-up days. So instead of having set aside make-up days, what we've done is identified professional development days that go pretty much once a month throughout the school year, and in the event that a school needs to make up, the flexibility is there to just use that professional development day for that make-up. And that's, so that's the practice. Now, in the event that all those nine days are taken up for, you know, due to some catastrophic typhoon or something, if all make-up days are exhausted, then the legislation being proposed here would give the Superintendent an opportunity to look at other creative ways to meet the instructional time requirements. And I think, so I think that's been exercised in other states in two ways. So for instance, we know that in some states where they're snowed in, we know that we've heard of some, you know, efforts by schools to send homework, you know, backpacks home with the students to do homework while they're at home, and use that as a way to count as an instructional time. As well as, we also know in other jurisdictions, there is the authority to waive some of these instructional hours in the event of a catastrophic event. So for instance, if you look at CNMI, where you're out for two, three months because of some disaster, you know, it's just impossible to build back that instructional time within the school calendar. So the Superintendent's authorities has developed an SOP with our partners and our stakeholders to deal with the situations that will take place if we've exhausted the nine make-up days that we built into our calendar.
Thank you. Can you just explain, Mr. Superintendent, the impact of the lunch hour or the recess minutes? How will this fall into the instructional hours requirement?
So those are not counted, just looking, those are not counted as instructional hours. So I think what happened in the prior round, when we were calculating the hours and the length of the school day, in that it got the issue of where the lunch hour fell into place, it got rolled into the calculation for secondary schools. And when we looked at that, you know, we understood that it needed to be further clarified. So the 1,260 instructional hours actually accidentally counted in the lunch hours. And so we had to discuss that, and it was, you know, I think it was a calculation error that we just need to correct now upon further review.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? No? Okay. This concludes...
Madam Vice Speaker.
Oh, yes, yes, Madam Chair.
In response to Senator Shelton, a good example of how the makeup is during the Dengue fever situation, or the Cholera Paga and Agita Johnston, you know, couldn't go to school. So the last professional development, they had classes. So that is just one of the examples. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this concludes our agenda for Bill 232, and so we are just going to take a short recess so that we can prepare the roundtable hearing for Bill 196-35. Thank you.
We will now convene the roundtable hearing. It is ten fifty-one. And I'd like to thank GPA for being here, being present today. If you'd like to come to the table, please. And DOE, this is in regards to Bill Number one nine six LS. Bill Number one nine six dash thirty-five LS is an act to amend subsection seven one one six alpha and add delta of chapter seven, division two, title seventeen, and subsection five zero zero eight point two alpha, bravo one and bravo two, chapter five, title five of Guam Code annotated, relative to authorizing the Guam Department of Education to enter into power purchase agreements to purchase solar energy from qualified providers. On the same token, just to give a little overview, Senator Sinagastin has also introduced a similar measure. And really, the goal is to allow educational institutions to be able to use the savings from solar to utilize them for capital improvement projects. And so, we did have this bill on the session floor, just this past session, but GPA came and they shared some concerns. And so, I'd like for us to clear that, clear all the concerns, and see if we need to address some changes in the bill to protect the interests of the island as a whole. And perhaps, we can discuss more about how we will move forward once the authority is given. So perhaps, Mr. Superintendent, did you prepare something for us? Okay, okay, thank you. And I'd like to thank my colleagues again, Senator Clint Regel and Senator Lee for being present. Thank you, Senators. So I'll just give it off to you guys, thank you.
Good morning again, Madam Vice Speaker, Senator Regel, Senator Regina Lee. My name is Maria Gutierrez, I am the Guam Education Board Chairwoman. And my testimony will be very short. This is regarding the Bill one nine six thirty-five. Madam Vice Speaker, Bill one ninety-six dash thirty-five would amend public law thirty-two ninety-five to grant GDOE the authority to procure solar energy from qualified vendors for all non-lease schools. Currently, the law provides the authority to the General Services Administration. There is an urgent need for GDOE to explore all opportunities, implement alternative energy, and generate savings that can be utilized for educational purposes. GDOE currently spends over thirteen million in power per year. With the authority provided by Bill one ninety-six dash thirty-five, GDOE intends to move forward as soon as possible to promote sustainable energy practices within our school system by implementing solar power and hopefully provide additional funding to meet other important GDOE needs. In testimony offered at an earlier public hearing on this subject, GDOE had requested the opportunity to utilize any savings to address deferred maintenance in our school facilities. A copy of the testimony is provided. Thank you again, Vice Speaker, for engaging with us and working on solution for our education community. We ask for your continued support and hopefully that your colleagues will support you, that the bills being heard today will move forward for an affirmative vote by the legislature soon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Vice Speaker, and members of the committee. Just to echo that, of course, you know, as we testified at the last hearing, we do support the bill, which essentially just shifts the authority from GSA to DOE to begin the procurement of solar energy from qualified vendors for all of our non-lease schools. I did mention, I know we've discussed this prior, about the ability to use the savings to support efforts around facilities or other improvement efforts. But as a start, we definitely were very appreciative of you addressing the issue of whether DOE can now just take responsibility and move forward. Again, you mentioned the bill, Bill two nineteen, which has a hearing later today. We understand that that bill would extend the authority to other educational institutions. We don't take a position on that, we're really just concerned with DOE's interests. It does open it up to enter into sale-leaseback agreement as well as sets up a structure for the use of savings for school facilities and other changes. I just want to say, we will be providing testimony at that roundtable, but we do appreciate the efforts of the sponsors of both bills and just want to work with you to ensure that at the end of the day, a solution will be provided. So
We will now convene the roundtable hearing. It is ten fifty-one. And I'd like to thank GPA for being here, being present today. If you'd like to come to the table, please. And DOE, this is in regards to Bill Number one nine six LS. Bill Number one nine six dash thirty-five LS is an act to amend subsection seven one one six alpha and add delta of chapter seven, division two, title seventeen, and subsection five zero zero eight point two alpha, bravo one and bravo two, chapter five, title five of Guam Code annotated, relative to authorizing the Guam Department of Education to enter into power purchase agreements to purchase solar energy from qualified providers. On the same token, just to give a little overview, Senator Sinagastin has also introduced a similar measure. And really, the goal is to allow educational institutions to be able to use the savings from solar to utilize them for capital improvement projects. And so, we did have this bill on the session floor, just this past session, but GPA came and they shared some concerns. And so, I'd like for us to clear that, clear all the concerns and see if we need to address some changes in the bill to protect the interests of the island as a whole. And perhaps, we can discuss more about how we will move forward once the authority is given. So perhaps, Mr. Superintendent, did you prepare something for us? Okay, okay, thank you. And I'd like to thank my colleagues again, Senator Clint Regel and Senator Lee for being present. Thank you, Senators. So I'll just give it off to you guys, thank you.
Good morning again, Madam Vice Speaker, Senator Regel, Senator Regina Lee. My name is Maria Gutierrez, I am the Guam Education Board Chairwoman. And my testimony will be very short. This is regarding the Bill one nine six thirty-five. Madam Vice Speaker, Bill one ninety-six dash thirty-five would amend public law thirty-two ninety-five to grant GDOE the authority to procure solar energy from qualified vendors for all non-lease schools. Currently, the law provides the authority to the General Services Administration. There is an urgent need for GDOE to explore all opportunities, implement alternative energy, and generate savings that can be utilized for educational purposes. GDOE currently spends over thirteen million in power per year. With the authority provided by Bill one ninety-six dash thirty-five, GDOE intends to move forward as soon as possible to promote sustainable energy practices within our school system by implementing solar power and hopefully provide additional funding to meet other important GDOE needs. In testimony offered at an earlier public hearing on this subject, GDOE had requested the opportunity to utilize any savings to address deferred maintenance in our school facilities. A copy of the testimony is provided. Thank you again, Vice Speaker, for engaging with us and working on solution for our education community. We ask for your continued support and hopefully that your colleagues will support you, that the bills being heard today will move forward for an affirmative vote by the legislature soon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Vice Speaker, and members of the committee. Just to echo that, of course, you know, as we testified at the last hearing, we do support the bill, which essentially just shifts the authority from GSA to DOE to begin the procurement of solar energy from qualified vendors for all of our non-lease schools. I did mention, I know we've discussed this prior, about the ability to use the savings to support efforts around facilities or other improvement efforts. But as a start, we definitely were very appreciative of you addressing the issue of whether DOE can now just take responsibility and move forward. Again, you mentioned the bill, Bill two nineteen, which has a hearing later today. We understand that that bill would extend the authority to other educational institutions. We don't take a position on that, we're really just concerned with DOE's interests. It does open it up to enter into sale-leaseback agreement as well as sets up a structure for the use of savings for school facilities and other changes. I just want to say, we will be providing testimony at that roundtable, but we do appreciate the efforts of the sponsors of both bills and just want to work with you to ensure that at the end of the day, a solution will be provided.
So We will now convene the roundtable hearing. It is ten fifty-one. And I'd like to thank GPA for being here, being present today. If you'd like to come to the table, please. And DOE, this is in regards to Bill Number one nine six LS. Bill Number one nine six dash thirty-five LS is an act to amend subsection seven one one six alpha and add delta of chapter seven, division two, title seventeen, and subsection five zero zero eight point two alpha, bravo one and bravo two, chapter five, title five of Guam Code annotated, relative to authorizing the Guam Department of Education to enter into power purchase agreements to purchase solar energy from qualified providers. On the same token, just to give a little overview, Senator Sinagastin has also introduced a similar measure. And really, the goal is to allow educational institutions to be able to use the savings from solar to utilize them for capital improvement projects. And so, we did have this bill on the session floor, just this past session, but GPA came and they shared some concerns. And so, I'd like for us to clear that, clear all the concerns and see if we need to address some changes in the bill to protect the interests of the island as a whole. And perhaps, we can discuss more about how we will move forward once the authority is given. So perhaps, Mr. Superintendent, did you prepare something for us? Okay, okay, thank you. And I'd like to thank my colleagues again, Senator Clint Regel and Senator Lee for being present. Thank you, Senators. So I'll just give it off to you guys, thank you.
Good morning again, Madam Vice Speaker, Senator Regel, Senator Regina Lee. My name is Maria Gutierrez, I am the Guam Education Board Chairwoman. And my testimony will be very short. This is regarding the Bill one nine six thirty-five. Madam Vice Speaker, Bill one ninety-six dash thirty-five would amend public law thirty-two ninety-five to grant GDOE the authority to procure solar energy from qualified vendors for all non-lease schools. Currently, the law provides the authority to the General Services Administration. There is an urgent need for GDOE to explore all opportunities, implement alternative energy, and generate savings that can be utilized for educational purposes. GDOE currently spends over thirteen million in power per year. With the authority provided by Bill one ninety-six dash thirty-five, GDOE intends to move forward as soon as possible to promote sustainable energy practices within our school system by implementing solar power and hopefully provide additional funding to meet other important GDOE needs. In testimony offered at an earlier public hearing on this subject, GDOE had requested the opportunity to utilize any savings to address deferred maintenance in our school facilities. A copy of the testimony is provided. Thank you again, Vice Speaker, for engaging with us and working on solution for our education community. We ask for your continued support and hopefully that your colleagues will support you, that the bills being heard today will move forward for an affirmative vote by the legislature soon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Vice Speaker, and members of the committee. Just to echo that, of course, you know, as we testified at the last hearing, we do support the bill, which essentially just shifts the authority from GSA to DOE to begin the procurement of solar energy from qualified vendors for all of our non-lease schools. I did mention, I know we've discussed this prior, about the ability to use the savings to support efforts around facilities or other improvement efforts. But as a start, we definitely were very appreciative of you addressing the issue of whether DOE can now just take responsibility and move forward. Again, you mentioned the bill, Bill two nineteen, which has a hearing later today. We understand that that bill would extend the authority to other educational institutions. We don't take a position on that, we're really just concerned with DOE's interests. It does open it up to enter into sale-leaseback agreement as well as sets up a structure for the use of savings for school facilities and other changes. I just want to say, we will be providing testimony at that roundtable, but we do appreciate the efforts of the sponsors of both bills and just want to work with you to ensure that at the end of the day, a solution
We will now convene the roundtable hearing. It is ten fifty-one. And I'd like to thank GPA for being here, being present today. If you'd like to come to the table, please. And DOE, this is in regards to Bill Number One Nine Six LS. Bill Number One Nine Six dash thirty-five LS is an act to amend subsection seven one one six alpha and add delta of chapter seven, division two, title seventeen, and subsection five zero zero eight point two alpha, Bravo one and Bravo two, chapter five, title five of Guam Code annotated, relative to authorizing the Guam Department of Education to enter into power purchase agreements to purchase solar energy from qualified providers. On the same token, just to give a little overview, Senator San Augustine has also introduced a similar measure. And really, the, the goal is to allow educational institutions to be able to use the savings from solar to utilize them for capital improvement projects. And so, we did have this bill on the session floor, just this past session, but GPA came and, and they shared some concerns. And so, I'd like for us to clear that, clear all the concerns, and see if we need to address some changes in the bill to protect the interests of the island as a whole. And perhaps, we can discuss more about how we will move forward, once the authority is given. So perhaps, Mr. Superintendent, did you prepare something for us? Okay. Okay, thank you. And I'd like to thank my colleagues again, Senator Clint Regel and Senator Lee for being present. Thank you, Senators. So, I'll just give it off to you guys. Thank you.
Good morning again, Madam Vice Speaker, Senator Regel, Senator Regina Lee. My name is Maria Gutierrez. I am the Guam Education Board Chairwoman. And my testimony will be very short. This is regarding the Bill One Nine Six Thirty-five. Madam Vice Speaker, Bill One Ninety-six dash thirty-five would amend public law thirty-two ninety-five to grant GDOE the authority to procure solar energy from qualified vendors for all non-lease schools. Currently, the law provides the authority to the General Services Administration. There is, there is an urgent need for GDOE to explore all opportunities, implement alternative energy, and generate savings that can be utilized for educational purposes. GDOE currently spends over thirteen million in power per year. With the authority provided by Bill One Ninety-six dash thirty-five, GDOE intends to move forward as soon as possible to promote sustainable energy practices within our school system by implementing solar power and hopefully provide additional funding to meet other important GDOE needs. In testimony provided, offered at an earlier public hearing on this subject, GDOE had requested the opportunity to utilize any savings to address deferred maintenance in our school facilities. A copy of the testimony is provided. Thank you again, Vice Speaker, for engaging with us and working on solution for our education, our education community. We ask for your continued support, and hopefully that your colleagues will support you, that the bills being heard today will move forward for an affirmative vote by the legislature soon. Sisus Marci.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Vice Speaker, and members of the committee. Just to echo that, of course, you know, as we testified at the last hearing, we do support the bill, which essentially just shifts the authority from GSA to DOE to begin the procurement of solar energy from qualified vendors for all of our non-lease schools. I did mention, I know we've discussed this prior, about the ability to use the savings to support efforts around facilities or other improvement efforts. But as a start, we definitely, we're very appreciative of you addressing the issue of whether DOE can now just take responsibility and move forward. Again, you mentioned the bill, Bill Two Nineteen, which has a hearing later today. We understand that the, that bill would extend the authority to other educational institutions. We don't take a position on, on, on that. We're just, we're really just concerned with DOE's interests. It does open it up to enter into sale leaseback agreement, as well as sets up a structure for the use of savings for, for school facilities and other, and other, and other changes. I just want to say, as we will, we will be providing testimony at that roundtable, but we do appreciate the efforts of the sponsors of both bills, and just want to work with you to ensure that at the end of the day, a solution is passed that will help DOE move forward to pursue alternative energy, generate savings, and promote sustainable practices. I did receive a copy from GPA of their testimony today, and as of this writing, I have not had an extensive opportunity to discuss the testimony with, with GPA officials, except just shortly before the hearing. But I definitely am open to working with them to address their concerns and suggestions. It's not the intent, as you know, to negatively impact our incumbent power provider, as we understand the critical role that GPA plays in supplying power to residents and businesses. However, we are looking forward to finally, in, you know, in twenty twenty, being able to explore and move forward with sustainable energy practices and ensure the effective use of our financial resources. So we stand ready to work with the committee and GPA, you know, with the input that they're going to provide today. And we don't, and we've never seen Bill One Ninety-six in any way limiting the possibility of that partnership with GPA to, to address our intended goal. So with that, we stand by to listen and, you know, provide our feedback with regard to GPA and to the solar providers, should they have continued suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Beneventi, do you, would you like to?
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. Senators, good morning. The, again, I'm not sure that you want me to read through my whole letter from February fifth, but basically, the cross of it is that we're asking the legislation to be flexible to allow GPA to contract directly for solar PV energy for Guam DOE. By contracting for an energy agreement for DOE allows GPA to provide this full complement of expertise and service to Guam's DOE's benefit. A process which receives contract approval by the Consolidated Commission of Utilities and the Public Utilities Commission mitigates significant risk that Guam DOE enters into agreements which does not result with the intent of the bill. And part of that is, I can summarize it, summarize that by, the net metering concept today provides full credit to the solar, solar owner, if you will. That full credit actually allows them not to pay for any of the infrastructure, the, the debt, two cents of that goes to debt, the TND, about one cent goes to TND, all the different aspects of the utility that, that needs are fixed costs, if you will. And so therefore, the continuation of net metering without consideration for the non, non, non-solar PV customers is really not a priority situation. And so therefore, you know, right now, I can, I can say that about three point eight million dollars of subsidy is already happening from non-solar to solar. You add DOE, that's another five, five million. You add UOG, that's another one million. You add GCC, that's another five hundred. So now you're already up to three point eight, over ten million dollars of subsidy. That ten million dollars are again, used to pay debts of the system. The infrastructure is very strong today, but they are debt. We have to borrow money to make it concrete, to make it what it is today, and, and discuss. So again, that's the, the reason for that. And so, we have petitioned the PUC to provide a priority and to move away from net metering and move it towards avoided costs. Avoided cost is fuel cost, avoided cost is line losses, because they're, they're not experiencing line loss for that energy, because it's right at the location, and some other aspects that could be added in. But really, it's just above a league, and so, the, the balance of that cost is used to service the system. So again, by going through the PUC, then it allows the PUC to set a rate based on the, based on the benefits that the, the Guam DOE system provides from a solar, and again, there's going to be batteries needed, there's no way around this. You can't put any more solar without batteries in the system, no? With the battery system, you're going to have a combination of economies of scale. They may be able to, to be able to put a process, a contract together that allows them to make more, provide more savings by utilizing economies of scale for a battery system that will work with the solar PV. So again, that can all be vetted and everything through the process, so that once the PUC sets a rate, then that's the rate that will go on, and then, and again, what savings is there are actual savings henceforth. You mitigate a lot of this risk, because the way it is now, okay, DOE can go out and contract for it. They contract for an agreement for, what, fifteen cents, seventeen cents, and then it gets changed, and, and then they end up having to pay not only that, plus other base rate scenarios, and then they end up with a contract that is more, it's going to cost them more than it was it's costing today. Now, there's other, there's two other parts of the equation that I, I proffered in the, or I mentioned in my letter. One, there has been a study conducted, which says you invest forty-one million dollars into the DOE system, you're going to get about four, four million dollars a year annual savings. The next portion is, again, I showed you how there's a big differential between the different schools and what is the cost per student. And if you look, and again, this is a, a good foot for thought, even when we go for lease schools in the future, if you look at the top of the list, the ones, the highest energy cost per student consists of the, of the lease schools, no? Other than Southern High, of course, is not, not efficient at all. The Mooning Elementary School, I think they need to change that air conditioning there to really reduce that cost. But again, the others are leased, and so therefore, even when you add new schools, you have to have efficiency performance standards for them to be able to make sure that you, again, minimize their, their use of energy. Then the third one, again, the least cost energy is the one that's not used, no? So again, perhaps I mentioned a program within DOE which allows the, the principals and, and the management of the school to really boil down and conserve energy. Shut off air conditioners at night, put it at seventy-eight degrees at night, and turn it, you know, a little colder in the morning. Little things like that is going to save a, a lot of energy for them. But they're not going to do it, in my opinion, unless there's some kind of incentive, no? And the incentive could be where, where based on that benchmark, they get either fifty percent of the savings that they achieve beyond that benchmark and use it for the other programs. Because again, I get all this, what you call it, WhatsApp, we're having a fundraiser at Adacall School for, you know, for a, a school program, different things like that. And I support that, but again, this is a scenario where, put the, put this on them, so that, give it a chance, and, and let's see what happens. So eliminate the energy that could be, improve with energy efficient, and then cap that up with solar PV, and then that will provide Guam DOE really with the intention of the bill. Because the middle part of that, improving energy efficient, you're actually upgrading the infrastructure. You're changing out the air conditioning. You're changing out the lights from the old lights to LED, you know? And again, recently John, we, about three million dollars have been received for, total about three million, two to three million is being used to change all the lights in certain four schools to LED, and that's going to result in, in savings, no? So that's my concern, Madam Vice Speaker. And again, the full gamut of GPS expertise can be provided, including procurement, preparation of the big spec, assessment, preparation of the big specs, conducting the bit, bit process, contracting, getting all the approvals, then beginning with the construction management, and then last but not least, making sure that the provider has minimum guarantees and performance standards that will, that, and that we monitor that every year to make sure they're in compliance, and penalties are provided as such if necessary, no? So again, this is not just a one-time procurement, it's really a commitment for twenty years. Because remember I mentioned earlier, forty million to, to upgrade the, to schools to save four point two million? The investment or the commitment for solar PV for Guam DOE for eighty percent of its energy is anywhere between sixty-six million investment to ninety-nine million, okay? It's not free, because you're committed to that for the next twenty years. Sixty-six million without batteries, or ninety-nine million with batteries. So therefore, again, it's a big investment requiring that you really get into a very, a very well-vetted, tight contract to allow you to ensure that over the next twenty years, we have not come out with unintended consequences. So that's my testimony, Madam Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Beneventi. I'd also like to thank our colleagues, Senator Perez and Senator Tydegui, for attending today's roundtable. Thank you, Senators. Would you like to come up and speak, anyone from the board? Okay. I think you wanted to give oral testimony, so you can go ahead and give it at this time, and then, once you're done, we'll have the panel ask, ask some questions, and can move forward with the dialogue from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Jeff Ficola, Chief Operations Officer for Micronesia Renewable Energy. It, I read the bill thoroughly. We, we agree with the way that the bill is written. I think the procurement should stay with GDOE. It has in the bill, and actually, the existing bill, that GPA shall provide technical advice and assistance to GDOE. So it's already in there, that they're supposed to supply that technical advice, the technical assistance. And in the procurement side of it, you know, there's a lot of other experts out there, not only in the solar energy industry, like SEIA, Solar Energy Industry Association, that helps with procurement on public entities, but other experts throughout the industry that could help on that side of it. Plus, you also have the Department of Ed, or Department of Energy, Enrel, of course. So there's a lot of experts out there. For GDOE to handle the procurement, they're handling a hundred million dollar project right now, which is the Simon Sanchez School. So they do have the expertise, for sure, to handle this procurement. Some of the structures, you know, I also read Senator San Augustine's bill too, and one of the structures in there is, you know, power purchase agreement. There's other, been some other finance structures that have been developed over the last couple of years, the sale-leaseback structure. One of the questions that was asked to GPA during the last public hearing was, what would be the best structure for GDOE? And the answer was ownership. The answer was a structure with no escalator. So there's different finance structures out there that, that can be introduced that accomplish that task, not just a power purchase agreement. Also, with, with those type of structures, the savings on those structures can be leveraged for additional monies to go back into maintenance programs, energy efficiency programs. So I think that accomplishes a lot of things, keeping that with GDOE. One of the things over the past couple of years is, with the power plant, public hearings on the power plant, and a lot of articles that came out from the utility, the power plant was supposed to solve a lot of the issues with intermittencies. So that's what we were hoping for, you know, not the size of the power plant as it was approved, the contract, but, you know, a newer type power plant for baseload generation, and of course, for some peak load, but, but to help out with the intermittencies. And GPA, of course, as we all know, they have a forty megawatt project that they're deploying with battery storage, that should also help out with intermittencies. But regardless of that, our inverters, the new inverters that are out, we, we do have frequency control on our inverters. So that should handle a lot of the frequency issues with solar energy systems coming on the grid. And plus, as I stated, the developer, whoever gets this project, it should be a requirement in the RFP where they would, or should have to do a feasibility study, study on the grid at each location to determine if it can be incorporated into the utilities grid. So that should be part of the RFP. The other thing is, it's already written in the law that the developer can offset eighty percent of DOE's, DOE's energy. So it, it has nothing to do with an M program. And what maybe should be put in there is protection for GDOE that they would always be, or they would always have the ability to export power when they are exporting power at the retail rate. So they're always protected on that side. And of course, time has always been of the essence, I think, for the industry and for the Department of Education. Because right now, what makes these programs really enticing and works for a developer is, of course, the ITC credit. So right now, in twenty twenty, that's gone from thirty percent down to twenty-six percent. Next year, it goes down to twenty-two percent, and then it actually gets phased out to ten percent. So that's a mechanism that developers use and finance, to help finance these systems, and actually makes them pencil out. So to wait another year, you know, this law was first passed in two thousand and fourteen, now's two thousand and twenty, we did the finance analysis on it, and GDOE has already missed thirty year, or over thirty million dollars in savings. So to stretch this out another year, another two years, it's, I just don't see the point. Now's the time to capitalize on this. GDOE has a shortfall. That money can be put back into the schools, the savings on it. Finance structures are out there, and it's, it's time to get this out for procurement. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jeffy. Mr. Superintendent, Guam Power Authority came to our office right on the eve of our session, specifically for this bill, and they presented before us the, this study from the Siemens that they contracted. And so basically, the study says that if you do a forty-one point five million dollar investment in fixing the lighting to be more energy efficient, the air conditioning units to be more energy efficient, you can save four point two million dollars annually. But of course, you have to have the investment of forty-one point five million dollars. And so really, the, the, some of the concerns that they shared was, you know, it's a matter of consistent savings. So if you do these upgrades to energy efficient models, then you have a consistent savings in revenue of four million dollars annually for the lifetime of the school. And so also, another concern is that we're moving on these power purchase agreements, not just for DOE, but UOG and GCC. And the concern is that DOE will have a separate business contracted with them to provide solar energy, UOG will have a different business, and GCC. And then additional concern on top of that is, do our local companies here on Guam have the capabilities to support the schools at DOE? And so really, it's a, it's trying to understand the, the vision that you have in mind for the solar energy, the, where will the capital come from? How many schools are you looking to introduce into the solar energy? Are you going to award different businesses the contract? Of course, you can't tell me, we don't know that, right? But just, just some kind of vision that you have for DOE to be able to go solar and, to go solar, and perhaps even a possibility to get off, get off the grid, because we run the schools during the day. So can you just share a little bit about that? And then, I think, Senator Regal, do you have any questions? Okay. After he's done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So with regard to demand-side management, you know, I think we would be able to say that we support that as a key component for addressing the energy use in our schools. And as we've been able to address some of the demand-side management issues with the investment of some of our Department of Interior funds, so some of the LED lighting replacements, that's been funded by DOI funds, as well as in partnership with GPA with available funds to, as part of the BEST program. funds to, as part of the BEST program and through some DOI grants, have been able to look at demand-side management, not only to do an assessment of the schools, but to pilot demand-side management strategies at Carbolito, and I think we're working on another school as well. So I don't believe that's a separate conversation. I think that it can be done hand-in-hand, and should be done hand-in-hand. But I think you've identified the other piece of it, which is a financing issue. So in order for the demand-side management piece to work, you have to invest in those demand-side strategies, whether it's replacing equipment, upgrading equipment, improving infrastructure, and then you'll benefit, you'll see the benefits over time. And so I don't disagree with that. I think the concern is, how do we get the upfront financing, right? This is a major investment, and then the payoff is over time. And given the government's resources, that's the key question. So we wouldn't be opposed to doing more demand-side management, but it's just going to be a function of resources, of upfront resources. And then the payback over time, we would be able to, you know, view as available for investment in other parts of the school system. With regard to, so with regard to the solar proposal before us, the power purchase agreement, and then I think as our, as my fellow panelists mentioned with the sale-leaseback that's being proposed in the other bill, both of those are really targeting the financing challenge, which is to say that if we don't have the upfront funding to do the demand-side management and to purchase the equipment, there's two ways you can go about it within our constrained resources. One is to enter into a power purchase agreement where we're using our current budget set aside for, to pay GPA. We use that portion to, you know, to pay for our providers, just in a typical way, we allocate that towards power, and it depends who our provider is. And if we're doing a power purchase agreement, a provider would be that third party. So that's within our, that's within our annual budget, our operating budget. A sale-leaseback would operate in a similar fashion. It would be an annual payment to, you know, to the, you know, I guess, an annual lease payment, just like with our lease schools. We can't afford the $60, $100 million it takes to build new schools. We then set aside part of the budget to pay the annual payment, let the developer take the risk of financing the project, and then we are able to set aside funding to make annual payments over a period of time. That will then enable us to then own that equipment. And it's just, so those two strategies are really financing strategies, given the fact that we don't have the upfront funding to invest, and this, you know, which is obviously a more direct and straightforward way. Our solar strategy really has been to try to pilot schools, right? So I think the challenge is, we have a challenge on the lease school side, which is, you know, we're kind of still stuck in the AG's office and working with the vendors because of the issue of how to be exempt from procurement. You know, it was an exemption from procurement, and then determining whether what we produce or set, put forward to the AG really, you know, was compliant with that. You know, to what extent are we bound by procurement law versus to what extent are we absolutely free of procurement regulations? So we're still in that discussion. But with the non-lease schools, we intend to go through the procurement process, we're required to go through the procurement process. So I don't think that would be an issue. I think the issue for us is, because we don't have the upfront financing to just go purchase the equipment, we're looking at these creative strategies of power purchase and leaseback. We understand the uncertainty built into the power purchase agreements. I mean, I think, you know, if you hear, on the one hand, you know, we've negotiated an agreement for the lease schools that would put us at 16.5 cents per kilowatt hour, at least at our last agreement. And at that rate, we wouldn't be reaching our current, our current kilowatt hour rates until 2020, based on the escalator and so forth built into that agreement. That's not yet done, but that was in the agreement that was sent to the AG. So that's one way to look at it. I mean, obviously, it's a negotiation, and it has to, of course, take into account the changing conditions, you know, in the, you know, in terms of the cost of power today. You know, every year it might differ, and so we always want to take that into account. So there is some risk built into it. I think, as it was posed to me before, what happens if the GPA's rates are much lower than your power purchase agreement? I think at the end of the day, if you're talking about one school versus 41 schools, it means that for the 40 schools, you've got a great rate, and you're going to make up for that, for that loss. Because the idea was always to pilot, not expose ourselves entirely to this risk, just to see how it worked and to determine whether we could achieve savings. And then, of course, the other issue is not just a matter of financial savings, but we've, you know, we are promoting sustainable practices. The governor and other partners, agencies have committed to try to achieve some sustainability goals, and we have to be able to, as a largest agency, practice and be able to explore those opportunities. So it was never, I think the issue for, that I would be concerned with as a utility is, you know, how many schools, at what pace, and what, you know, how would that affect the overall system? Our intent has always been to do it, you know, very incrementally, so that we could put it in place, get a financing structure that works, and after, you know, see what the impact is on our utilization of power and what the impact is both on DOE and GPA. It's never, I think we're, you know, at least from my perspective, very concerned that we don't, you know, put our incumbent utility, you know, in a predicament, but we should be able to have some reasonable measure of progress on the solar energy side. So demand-side management, support it. We don't have the resources upfront to necessarily do that, but we appreciate anything that can be provided. Solar, we're just looking for an incremental, reasonable opportunity to move forward so that we can have more data and more information to share with the legislature as to whether we want to expand it to more schools and what that impact will be on GPA and its ratepayers. So again, not a full get-off-the-grid strategy, but really just trying to pilot a handful of schools and then go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Senator Rajad?
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Mr. Beneventi, my question is, I didn't, excuse me, I didn't quite catch the entire gist of your testimony or presentation today. What is it exactly that GPA is proposing? If you could sum it up.
To sum it up, it's really to conduct the procurement for Guam DOE and conduct through a process where we bring that to the CCU and the PUC, which eventually sets a rate based on that procurement for Guam DOE. And in that case, it eliminates all the uncertainties of DOE having to pay for the system. Because just going to John's testimony, just what John just said, now, he can get a contract for 16.5 cents, right? But his cost today is, say, 26, 28, right? So there's a 12 cents difference. That's a few, 15.4 cents. The fuel just went down to about 13.8, 14, right? Almost 2 cents. So therefore, now his bill is down to 26 versus the 16. That 10 cents is not, it's not savings, it's a savings directly between himself, between Guam DOE and by that contract, but that's for no payment to the grid. So therefore, this is what the grid provides to Guam DOE. They only generate the power in the daytime, right? And then they use it at night also, correct? They generate power, you know, throughout the year, but mainly use it only certain nine months out of the year. The rest of the year, who's the storage? The storage is the GPA grid. And all, when it rains for 11, no, if I may finish, Senator.
Nine months, the other months, it's actually feeding power into the grid.
Yeah, but I'm saying.
Because summertime, it's closed, so it's just, it's not in operation.
But it is using the grid, right, Senator? It is using the grid. It's feeding back in or whatever, it is using the grid, but no contribution to the grid. And when I say the grid, I'm not talking about GPA. I'm talking about the whole 52,000 ratepayers that pay for the grid. You know? It's their, it's their grid. They paid all this time to make it concrete pole, to make it solid, and they're paying a debt of 2 cents, 3 cents for other things. So everybody should contribute and lessen the burden of everyone to that. And that's my, that's my only concern, because at the end, what you end up to be is that GPA needs a rate increase, you'll go on file for one, and the PUC will have to provide it to make sure that we pay all our debts, that's part of the requirement. But then who's going to provide the additional money? Those that are paying for the grid. But not everyone is paying for it. So that's the concern. So again, that saving is going to come from the non-solar PV. So what we're trying to say is, the PUC and its wisdom can probably find a way to provide, CCU and PUC through the process can find a way to provide a value for Guam DOE, which becomes a true savings, while at the same time, they're contributing to the grid. So that's the, that's what I'm talking, because, I mean, if Guam DOE was independent and just get off the grid and do, you know, Senator, it won't be 16.5 cents. It won't be 16.5 cents too. I can assure you that you need another 15 to 20 cents to that 16, just for them to be off the grid. Okay? So again, the grid plays a major part in this. And all we're trying to do, and I, you know, I'm just frustrating at times, all I'm trying to do is protect everyone's.
GPA's interest. I understand.
Wait, wait, when I say GPA, it's ratepayers, Senator. Please.
So, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Beneventi represented that you guys use the grid at night. How much power do you guys use at night?
I don't know if I took that from him. I think what he was saying was, I think, at least I interpreted.
He said you guys produce power during the day, then use the grid at night.
Correct. So I think, what I think, at least the way I interpret it is that in, to the extent that we don't, we're not able to generate sufficient power, we would rely on the grid. And I guess what I, the way I'm interpreting this, just broadly speaking, and again, trying to balance the interests of ratepayers as well, as well as our school system, is that we, nothing in the proposal proposes that we remove ourselves entirely from the grid. It maximizes the capacity at 80% of our utilization would be provided from solar PV, and then the rest, we would still have a connection to the grid. So I don't, I don't anticipate that there would be that disconnection from GPA.
Yeah, what I'm just trying to determine is, do you use a lot of power at night?
And most is going to be during the day.
It's mostly during the day when the school's in operation, right?
Right.
So really, during peak hours, that's really when DOE's using less power during peak hours, right? Peak hours is.
Yeah. And for Beneventi, what time is peak?
But Senator, just from what you said, they are using the grid whether it's the daytime or peak time or whatever, without contribution. That's my whole point. They are using the grid. That's all.
During peak, when is peak hour? Or what's the peak time?
Peak's about 7:00 at night.
7?
7:00 PM.
And that's probably when you guys use the least amount of power, right?
It'd probably only be sports events at high schools, pretty much, yeah.
That's all I was trying to get out, was that they're really not using a lot of power during peak.
Less during the peak time. That's correct. But my point is that where the energy storage for the school, because they only generate in the daytime, and allowed, and that was my only point, no?
So your proposal, Mr. Beneventi, is for GPA to take over the entire procurement of any sort of solar or any kind of renewable energy system for DOE, correct?
That's correct. If you want to, in my opinion, if you want to get it done, and get it done where you minimize risk, invite a lot of competition to make it happen, bring you the best course, then we have the expertise and the experience to make that happen.
Understood.
And by allowing, by allowing us to do that and going through our process, then GPA can provide the full gamut of its services, no? From engineering to procurement to all of that. Because consultation can mean just that, consultation. Case in point, John negotiated, right, the lease school agreement, then he asked us our opinion. So that's consultation. Anything else, you know, I mean, to spend all the energies required to go through a bid process, go through the question-and-answer period, answer the technical questions, do all of this, as mentioned in my, in my, in my summary, that's an extensive amount of effort then. So that's the proposal that we have before you.
But what about if you guys just provided technical assistance, as I believe this what the bill would allow anyways currently, is that DOE would do the procurement, but you guys would provide all that expertise, as you were mentioning, with the technical assistance for the procurement?
Yeah, it's not, technical assistance, again, unless you let us be the one to provide it, I doubt whether we can be able to successfully make that happen. That's all I'm saying. Technical assistance is not going to be enough to make this thing happen in terms of priority, in terms of all the different things that needs to be done. Whereas if you play, if you place that under GPA's requirement to ensure that Guam DOE comes out with a solution, then I can assure you that we will make it happen. That's what, that's my point, no?
Mr. Fernandez, if GPA were to take over the procurement as they're proposing, how much would DOE save on its power?
I'm not sure. It depends how, you know, what gets negotiated through that procurement. I think the, you know, our biggest concern, and I, you know, I think that's my conversation with GPA, is what we're really concerned with at GDOE is an assurance that, one, we will move forward and get a procurement done in a reasonable timeframe; number two, that we will maximize the opportunities for savings, so that we can utilize that savings for the school system; and three, that we can have an assurance of a certain number of schools, you know, being done within that time. Like I said, you know, that clarity, I think we always appreciate the technical expertise and assistance, but for us, and I, you know, I did mention this, is that we just want to guarantee that we can get a certain number of schools done within a reasonable period of time, and in a way that maximizes the savings too. In any way with that, if you can do it in a way that offsets any risk, doesn't negatively impact, you know, the rest of the island in a significant way, you know, we're not, you know, we're open to that. It's just we need some basic level of assurance, because we've been discussing this for so long, and I believe the solar providers have talked a little bit about the tax credit timeframe. If that doesn't extend, then, you know, we start losing the opportunities for, you know, for that incentive to remain in place.
What I'm trying to determine is if you would still save the same amount if you went through GPA's procurement as you would if you procured it yourself? That's what I'm trying to determine.
Well, if they can negotiate a better rate overall, I mean, that was, I mean, that's, I mean, this is like, I mean, for us on the procurement side, it's a, it would be, you know, making sure we have qualified vendors and then entering into negotiation with them, and we've done that, you know, and we want, and I think the consultation we've had with GPA is just to make sure that it operates, you know, in a way that GPA can sign off on. If they can negotiate a better rate, then of course, we would be willing to entertain that. But.
So, Mr. Beneventi, if you were to handle procurement for these services for power for DOE, would DOE realize the same amount of savings they would if they were to procure it themselves?
And what is that amount of savings, Senator?
I believe it was represented before that you guys could cut your power bill in half.
I think we, you know, if we used, I think we were, based on the 16.5 cents, I think maybe that's the way to look at it. And based on the 16.5 cents, we estimated for the lease schools, probably about a third of, a third savings would be, we able to save a third of our amount spent on the lease schools currently. So somewhere, I forget which year we would hit that, but that was a general expectation.
I remember in a hearing previously, there was some testimony that currently you've spent about $12 million a year on power, correct?
Correct.
And I think there was some representation, I believe it was from DOE, that if you were to go renewable on all the schools, then you could cut that to around $6 million.
Yeah, I think we're probably, I would be more comfortable saying around $4 million was what, I think if you extrapolated from what we've done with, in terms of getting the deal done with the lease schools, it would come about to that amount, probably around $4 million. But it was mostly about a third of the, and if we could get a half, of course, we would, you know, benefit from it more. I think it just really depends on, you know, the deal that gets negotiated at that time. And I have to tell you, in our experience with the lease schools, we went through several iterations of that negotiation, because when we earlier negotiated, prices were higher, you know, and we ended up with a higher rate. We kept pushing it down as the conditions got better. So, you know, point-in-time, you know, estimates, that's what we're basing it on.
So four to six million. So let's go with $4 million, the lower figure. Mr. Beneventi, if GPA were to handle procurement for GDOE, would GDOE be able to save $4 million on its power bill annually?
GDOE would not be able to save $4 million on its power bill if they have to pay their fair share of the system. The only way they're going to save that amount of money is through subsidy. We think we can. We think we can, the sixteen and a half cents, we think we can lower that, but it still doesn't mean that, wait, but it doesn't mean that they're gonna save four and a half million unless the PUC requires, authorizes that they get the full subsidy of that thing.
Can I just clarify, you're saying, you said unless they pay their fair share. I think you're referring to avoided costs and those other issues that you bring up with regards to the NEM program.
Paying fair shares, paying the base rate of the system.
But that, but the NEM program, you haven't completed that petition with PUC, correct?
That's correct. That petition is in play.
So under the current framework, they would be able to save four million. It's unless you get that changed, correct?
Well, Senator, we're going into a twenty-year contract. I cannot just speak as to today, no? You're going in a twenty-year contract, and if the PUC says you will pay the full rate, you sign for sixteen.
What I'm getting at is you're saying fair share, but it hasn't been determined what the fair share is.
If you sign for sixteen, and you had to pay the base rate, and now oil price in about two years, our LEAC price is down to ten, now DOE is paying six cents more than what they would have had with GPA. That's how the numbers work, no?
I was specifically talking about, you mentioned pay their fair share. That's, and you're referring to the NEM program, correct? You're referring to what you're petitioning the PUC in order for NEM customers to pay what you're representing as the fair share, right?
The base rate of the system is what everyone pays except the NEM program today, which is what we're petitioning the PUC to change.
Which hasn't been changed yet, is what I'm saying.
Which we're still in the process to change. And then when you're going into a twenty-year contract, which could be changed in a year for, I know, less than a year, by the time you get a contract in place or, you know, hopefully you'll know, but if not, you could sign a twenty-year contract resulting in higher costs. And that's my whole point about this, the process. Now, if it went through the PUC and stuff, PUC resets the rates for, for all the customers, therefore, they can set the rate, and once that rate is set, then there's no deviation from it, see? You mitigate that risk, that's all I'm saying, no?
Thank you, Senator Rigel. Senator Tydego, I believe you have some questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and it's good to hear that the superintendent was mentioning earlier about working with GPA, most especially when he made a comment on the, on some kind of feasibility study to, to see the cost on this. We need, we definitely need a person to look into the cost verification savings analysis that I don't think has ever been done yet, you know, to determine the cost. It was mentioned here, and I think by both GPA as well as yourself, Mr. Superintendent, with regards to, you know, going through energy efficient measures, like what they did on the program at the University of Guam, where they were able to cut their fuel bill or their, their power bill almost in half by this project that they were, by simply changing out the light bulbs. But most especially, I think the biggest cost was the air conditioning. You know, putting more star efficient, energy efficient air conditioning is gonna cut a huge amount of cost for the Department of Education. I mean, we're looking at here, saving money for the Department of Education, but we have to keep in mind that your savings is not gonna cost more for the people out there paying power and the importance of using the grid. So I'm glad that you guys are working together to discuss this. I mean, even you mentioned it yourself, that, you know, going, you know, saving money, but you don't wanna have to do it on, on the shoulders of everyone else who's on the backs of those individuals. You know, the, one of the things I had questioned was regarding the purchase power agreement, utilizing only businesses that are on Guam to go after this procurement. And, you know, I agree in supporting our locals, but if we can get someone in here, and we're looking at cutting costs, if we can get someone in here who, who can actually answer to this RFP if it should come up, do you have a problem with utilizing anyone, even if they're not home-based on Guam, but, you know, it's, some companies, what they do when they see an RFP, they, they get a license and then they go after the bid as well, but they're home-based in another state or country. Do you have a problem with that?
I think that's a policy decision for the legislature. I think in the procurement process, you know, we typically invite as much competition as possible, and then we evaluate our, you know, the bidders on their, on those qualifications. Sometimes it benefits them to be local businesses because they're more familiar, have expertise and more of a proven record of success. But, you know, I can easily see that, you know, I wouldn't wanna restrict competition if it generates a good outcome for the department. Again, that's, I think, our position is, you know, let's move forward, but in terms of the specifics of whether it's local or off-island, you know, I need that to, you for input on that.
Thank you. And, you know, the twenty-five years is quite long. As I was reviewing this and looking through some of the options that we have, not just today, but in the future, we know that solar panels only have a life expectancy of about twenty years. We use, we utilize or lose one percent every year on that solar power, panel. By time the PPA program is done, you know, we've, the power of the solar panel is not, it's inept, it won't be able to move forward, so we have to again go into another purchase agreement. Now, the technology today is showing that smaller panels are generating just as much of production as the larger panels are doing it. So if we get ourselves into a twenty-five-year contract utilizing a certain amount of panels, and of course, I read some of the testimony that was brought up by one individual, and I thank the GPA for providing this outreach program that you did to the community that mentioned, you know, having all these panels everywhere and, you know, on our roofs, on, you know, in our backyards and almost, I don't wanna say littering, but it's quite a bit of panels out there. And technology is coming so that smaller panels are more efficient. But being in a twenty-five-year contract, we won't have that option to move forward, you know, in utilizing smaller panels when, when the technology comes about. And I, I really hope you look at possibilities and grants and opportunities by one, two schools, a school at a time, and outright purchasing these panels. Because through a cost analysis and verification, you'll find, and I don't see anybody submitting any of these documents with a cost analysis here to show us, it will be a lot less, you know, inexpensive for us and for DOE as well. But of course, if we go, we provide, and I think GPA mentioned, opportunities to provide purchasing the panels outright might be the better option for us. I hope that's also included in your feasibility study analysis and, and coming up with good solutions, so.
Well, I think a couple of things. I mean, you're referring to the term of the, of the agreement, so I think nothing in the bill would preclude a vendor from making, from utilizing the latest technology to meet their obligations. The obligation for the vendor is to provide eighty percent of our need based on, you know, what our current utilization looks like. So the, the way, the way that I would structure that contract was that, that would be the obligation over time. Over that twenty-five years, the vendor would be responsible for installing, maintaining, and ensuring adequate capacity for those solar panels throughout the duration of the contract. So there wouldn't be a period in time where they're producing less, you know, where you're talking about, they're only doing thirty percent of our need and we're still paying the same, you know, we're relying on GPA now. That, that wouldn't be the way, at least that's my understanding of how this law is structured. So, so there's that, there's that, hopefully that protection. I think additionally, over that period of time, you know, should the, should the situation change, should the environment change, you know, obviously we would like the flexibility to be able to exit that agreement if needed, right? So in our discussion with, with vendors, you know, at least with our particular vendor, it was our understanding that, you know, by the time we hit, you're gonna need at least a commitment of five, six, seven years for that vendor to be made whole in terms of their financing commitment and the upfront costs. And that afterwards, you might want to consider an exit strategy in the event that one of the parties, or at least the DOE, determines that it's no longer in our economic interest to participate in this agreement. What we negotiated was the opportunity to, first of all, we held off the escalator rates for as long as we could in that agreement so that we would maintain the same rate for us, or at least guarantee the savings for six years, or guarantee the rate for six years. And then beyond that, we, we put in place an exit clause that in the event that we wanted to move forward and just outright purchase the panels instead of paying the power and paying for all that maintenance, that we would be able to do so based on an independently determined market rate for the panels. So, so I think there are ways to work through a contract to protect against some of those risks, but you're absolutely right. If you just lock yourself in a twenty-five years and without the protections in place to maximize those savings and, you know, the benefits for DOE, then you would have...
And the utilize of new technology is important, yeah.
Right, so I do, yes, absolutely, and that's, and that, a lot of that is just built into the, would be built into the contract, but yes, we're absolutely concerned about the same things. And I think that you also mentioned, you know, of course, with the man-side management and outright purchasing, that again is the most direct way of accessing, you know, solar panels and being able to use solar panels. The challenge there is again the upfront costs to do so. So I think, you know, if it's an option...
I think if we go slower, you know, by one school at a time and not the upfront cost for all your schools, but, you know, just go in a slow, slower pace.
Absolutely, and we don't wanna...
To get to where we need to do without jeopardizing, you know, other ratepayers and moving forward. But one last question, Madam Chair. Thank you for this opportunity, because I have another meeting to attend, but you mentioned earlier, you've been talking to one particular vendor. Who is that vendor?
Well, this was actually through the leased schools, so this was through our work with the Guam Education Financing Foundation, which runs the Adicali, Guan, Estamo, Mido, and Okadu. So the law actually exempts them from the procurement process and allows them to go directly, enter into an agreement with a vendor, subject to a negotiated power purchase agreement. So that actually did not go through the full, I mean, if we went through a full procurement process and got a better deal, that would be even better. But this actually, because of the structure of the lease, you know, they're actually the landlord for that facility, and we would, you know, the law asks us to go directly to the landlord for them to go and engage the vendor.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tydego. Senator Perez, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think it's really important that we provide these checks so that we don't get locked into these agreements that where DOE is actually paying more than what really the cost of energy to supply that energy, so that's good to hear that. I just wanna bring up another point. I mean, this is not maybe the primary concern, but as far as when we're looking at solar power, renewable energy, you know, it's great that you're gonna leverage the savings to pay for this demand-side improvements. So I think like putting in energy efficient products like air conditions are the big, the big ticket, I think. I think you can reduce your energy use by seventy percent just by replacing these, these non-energy efficient products. I think that's one great way to leverage the savings. But I think, you know, maybe even adding into this pilot, I mean, if we can think a little bit bigger. So this idea as perhaps like on weekends where, you know, energy's not being consumed, it's not being used by the school, that if there's a way that this could be a part of the infrastructure to charge electric vehicles. So that way, there, there could be a revenue generating source for the schools that can go into their programs or potentially even leveraging more of that money to go towards more energy efficiency in the schools. So I see this as a potential, an investment that not only saves money, but it can produce money. So I really hope that you can maybe think about that in this RFP process.
Yeah, and so I would, so I appreciate that. I think the law doesn't quite have that language in place, but I do, I was just thinking along the same lines that, you know, because we lack the upfront resources to do a lot, you know, to invest heavily in the demand-side management, and we've been relying on federal funds and grants to do so, it might be a good idea to, you know, if the legislature wanted to ensure that as part of the savings that we do, you know, utilize that in part to improve the demand-side management, because I mean, that's, it would go hand in hand. I mean, I think we don't wanna leave this conversation saying it's either solar or demand-side management. These things should be able to operate hand in hand. So I appreciate that, and I think I was, you know, along the same lines. With regard to electric vehicles, I'd be happy to, you know, entertain any creative, you know, ideas about how to, you know, maximize our contributions and use of what's generated. Again, so, again, if I could just, you know, roll this back again, I think, you know, I've heard, we've heard from GPA, and I'm well aware, I think everyone's well aware, GPA's concerns that if we took this out to its full capacity, we're gonna have a major issue with regard to how they, what the impact is on the existing infrastructure and the rates that get charged to all the users. I'm not proposing that, and I've never come to this table saying that that's what we're looking at. Whether we work with GPA in this legislation or outside the legislation, I believe that in the year 2020, as the largest government agency in the government of Guam, with, you know, trying to incorporate, you know, issues of sustainability into our curriculum, part of the governor's efforts to promote this as, as part of an island-wide effort, that we should be able to demonstrate in short order at least a handful of schools where we can test the concept of whether solar energy helps us to benefit our schools, demonstrate sustainable practices, generate savings, provide a source of revenue for other investments, and do it, you know, in a way that we can then test that concept and see the impact on GPA and DOE, and then make adjustments from there. I'm open to that. It's just, we just have to get started at some point.
So, Mr. Beneventi, in the, so you're proposing that GPA consult with DOE as far as setting up the RFP. What is your position on PPAs versus, you know, leasebacks? You know, are you, my concern basically with some of these power purchasing agreements is that we're locked into a rate. So I just wanted to get your position on that.
Actually, the, the power purchase agreement is the tool that we use for even our utility scale today. We're into a twenty-year contract with a provider. They own, operate, and maintain the facility, and we just buy for the energy that we receive from them with a minimum guaranteed amount of energy. So they have, there are benchmarks that they have to meet. At the end of the twenty years, the facility is still theirs, and why is that? Because the life of this equipment is about twenty years, whether you look at it as from the battery or from the solar PV panel itself. And then after twenty years, there's other technologies that may, you know, don't forget the, I'm sorry, I don't mean don't forget, but solar PV and batteries are in an evolution. They're, they're constantly improving and heading forward. So in ten, twenty years, there's gonna be better technology. I will, I will bet on that, no? And so therefore, you have an opportunity to come in then and have another contract or agreement. If you have a solar farm and you own such a big one for yourself, then you have to deal with some unknown consequences yet. You don't know whether, how do you get rid of the panels? All of a sudden, there's something found in the panel that is environmentally unacceptable. The batteries itself, how do you get rid of it? That is on the part of the performance, so there's minimal risk by going, but the key to the whole thing is you have to contract, you have to have a very tight contract to ensure that you don't, that you are gonna make that savings through the twenty-five years. And that's what we've worked real hard in our, in our, our power purchase agreement. We have a hundred and twenty thousand kilowatts at eight and a half cents, and we have one before the OPA, which again, that's the other, you know, the amount of effort to go before the OPA, lawyers and the amount of volumes of information is substantial. So it's gonna take us probably another month or two to go through that process. I'm confident that we will win that process, and if we did, that being the case, we're gonna get eleven cents per kilowatt hour with batteries. Now, that eleven cent is gonna offset nineteen cents per kilowatt hour peak time cost in the system. And when it does offset that, then the value of the peak time use is gonna, you know, and the cost of peak time is gonna come down. So again, continuing processes like that, you know, is how we assure ourselves that we end up with a good contract moving forward. You can, as an, as an individual owner, the best payback, of course, is owning the system yourself. You can pay back for it in five to eight years, you know? But as for the utility, we're having them make the investment, because at the end, we really don't wanna... we're having them make the investment because at the end, we really don't want to own the, the solar PV farm at the end of the investment period, no? For the, for the residential, five to eight years, they, they recover their money, their balance of the years is kind of free, that amount of free energy for them by owning the system, see? And, and that's even, if it's avoided cost, it goes to like 10 to 12 years, but they still get like eight years of, of savings. And avoided cost doesn't now, uh, impact, you know, they're paying their fair share of the grid. So that's what we're, somewhere between there is a compromise that we hope to achieve. Uh, so at least, you know, uh, it's not one side to the other right now. That's all.
Thank you. Uh, Senators, I've, I've been listening a lot and just some observations. First off, there are a lot of numbers that are thrown around, and I've never ever seen any substantiation of these numbers. Uh, the number of saving of four million or six million a year, that's a number. But I've never seen anybody say, and I just want to correct one thing. You are one of the largest, uh, GovGuam users of power. Uh, the other one who's just this large issue in the government of Guam who uses power is called GWA. They pay $13 million a year to GPA. So we have two very large power, power consumers in the government of Guam. The, the point I think I'd like to make, and I'm, this is my belief. If GPA, if DOE procures from GPA, they will get the best deal possible because it will be reviewed. That deal will be reviewed by the PUC. It'll be reviewed by GPA first, the CCU, and it'll be reviewed by the PUC. The rate will be set by the PUC. The contracts that we have have clauses in them that don't say you, that they will, the power producer will be paid so much every year, every month. No. They're paid per kilowatt delivered. And if they don't deliver, there's no payment. That's what you need to look for. And if they don't deliver by below a certain amount, there are penalties. And that's what you need to look for. And that, that ability to contract, that knowledge to contract is at GPA. That, that's the bottom line. If you want the best deal for DOE to save the most amount of money, that ability is at GPA. I, I've been to many of these hearings and I sat in the back because I wanted John to speak first. John is a registered public engineer, I mean, registered engineer, a PE. He's one of, he has 13 others at GPA. That's all they do is utility, and they know all this stuff. I don't. They do. And I rely on them. And if you want the best deal, they, they are going to go in, when you, when they, when John says he's going to do an assessment, he and his group are going to do an assessment. They'll look at the roofs, they'll look at the power panels, they'll be able to know what they're going to ask somebody who's going to submit a bid. They're going to say, this is what we're looking for. If you're going to just say, well, anybody come and look, they're going to say, oh yeah, we can do this. John is going to lay it all out. It's going to take a little bit of time. I'm not going to lie to you. Our, our agreements take us time. But at the end of the day, we come out with eight cents for the people of Guam and 11 cents to shift at night to cut down. We are going to shut down a lot of power plants with this new power plant and what we're doing. We're going to bring the power bill down. That's going to come down. And I, I appreciate DOE, they don't have this expertise. And the people who are coming in who will want to bid, if you have, it's called economy scale. The bigger, the better. The, John mentioned that we have a protest at OPA on the 11 cents for shifting. Guess why? Because one of the bidders is saying, I'm using local preference. And I should get, and the bottom line is, so then we'll pay more for power? We'll make the people of Guam pay more for power so we can have local preference? I, I, and the guy didn't even win, he's not even number two, he's number three, but he's still trying to argue. The number one bidder is the 11 cents. He's higher than that. I don't know the number, John, but immaterial. He's higher. But because of local preference, he beats number two. And now he's arguing, well, number one can't do the job. So I should be considered. And I'm saying, number one is going to do the job or pay a huge penalty to GPA and the people of Guam, because the people of Guam own GPA. So they are going to do the job. That's the hammer we have. That's what John brings to the table with all of his engineers. Okay? And I, I, it's just that simple. Uh, and, and you know, maybe what, what I can offer you is that, uh, as we go through this process and John Beneventi works with John Fernandez at DOE, that they will, they should be reporting to you. They should come back. So when, when John puts the bid specs together, he should, he should come back with John Fernandez and, and explain it to you. And then when the bids go out and they come back and we, and we evaluate them, after the evaluation, John Beneventi and John Fernandez can come back and explain. And then you can say, okay, uh, this is what most likely the savings will be, and it'll be quantified. It'll be quantified in paper. You can see the documents. And then it goes to the PUC. The PUC sees anything wrong, they're going to say, no, no, this should, this is, and they'll set the price that DOE will pay for that renewable energy. Okay? Uh, it's, it's, it's really that simple. And I, I don't want to belabor the point. We want clean energy for the school system. We also want to try, see if we can save them as much money as possible. Okay? Uh, whether they leave lights on at night or not, that's immaterial to us. That's, that's something that John will work on, you know, making sure. We, we all do that. Even at GPA, we always say to people, shut off the light when you leave the room. And that's something that, you know, system wide, we should all be doing. But simple things like that. But really, this is, to me, the best way to accomplish this.
Thank you, Mr. Duñez. Uh, we're running a little bit over time, so I'd like to thank GIAA for being here. I know, uh, the general manager is a very punctual man, so just close up within five minutes and I think you have a
Yeah, I just, I just want to respond on, you know, again, there's no way this is going to get done without DOE and GPA working together, right? I mean, that's, that's, I mean, that's what we're here for. I mean, I'd like to agree with Mr. Duñez that they definitely have the technical expertise and experience to be more familiar with the specifications, uh, with, you know, with the vendors of, you know, running technical procurement, uh, you know, issuing technical procurement packages such as this. And I, and I see that. I don't, you know, we don't claim to have that. But we do, what we do have at the Department of Education is a desire to ensure that we do whatever is possible to generate savings so that we can invest them back into the education system for other purposes. So we are spending 12, 13 million dollars on power each year. This notion that we could go and explore, I mean, this really was an issue about piloting, not taking over, taking ourselves completely off the grid. And I appreciate GPA coming and, and being here to tout the expertise. Um, and I see that, and I want to work in a good partnership. But I think at the end of the day, what we're both looking for, and I hope we're all looking for, is just assurance. Can we, if we're going to, you know, if they want to take over the procurement, all I would ask for is let's get some timelines in place. Let's come to an agreement on the scope of what we would, of this project, so we can just move forward and just make it happen. We're happy to come back and report it. You know, we're happy to, to talk about progress. We're happy to negotiate what makes sense for DOE and GPA in the course of this. But maybe if, if that's the case, and there is a desire to have GPA, you know, working together with, with DOE, the, the real key thing for me is outcomes. So it's timeframe, understanding what schools we, we can, you know, start to pilot, and then putting a plan together and executing. Other than that, it's, you know, if we don't have that, then just, you might as well give DOE the procurement authority and let us take a shot at it. But we're happy to work with them, uh, you know, and have them in the lead. It's just a matter of can we agree on some measurable progress over the near future, you know, the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Uh, Simon, did you have something to say?
Thank you, Senators, for giving us the opportunity. Uh, quick comments. Um, the, at the last CCU meeting, um, this, this discussion of no one wants to unfairly shift the cost of the grid from one customer to any other customer, and it's really a balancing act. And I think John can update me on the record, but he showed the CCU, if we don't address the, the NEM piece, which is, you know, hotly debated, but it, it, it is properly resolved by the PUC. Um, it, it could be a, a shift of five to six million dollars to the other rate payers if, if, depending on how far we take DOE in, in this process. And, and the key thing I want to just leave with you as an impression, the, the grid really comes into play with solar when you have five or six days of rain in a row, right? When solar can't make energy. Then everyone that has solar needs that grid to get energy from us and, in order to keep their lights on. So the grid costs people, costs Guam. Right now, um, non-NEM customers pay for the grid and NEM customers, in our view, don't, don't pay for the grid. Uh, and without getting into that argument, but the best example just to you, for you to visualize is just when you have heavy rains for three, four, five days, and that solar system on top of school ain't, isn't making any power, they're going to have to get that power from GPA through the grid. And so the concern is, can they help pay for that, that benefit, uh, that they receive? And, and, and John is rightfully putting together a strategy that says, let's work together and we'll work it through the CCU and the PUC. And of course, those are all public processes as well, so providers can jump in and, and voice their, their, their opinion. So I just wanted to, to put that in perspective, that the, the grid really steps in with solar when you have heavy rain. And as you know, we have heavy rain. The other thing that I want to stress, and I think John alluded to it, in 2008, we passed a law with Speaker Ben to be at 25% by 2035. We're going to be there in 2023. We did it in phases. We didn't, we, we didn't, none of us promised that, and none of us really knew in 2008 that we could do it that fast, but technology allowed us to do it. But we had a phase one, a phase two, a phase three, and a phase four. John has presented to you the heavy hitters. Which schools use the most? Which schools use the list, lease? I'll, I'll use an extreme example. I'm not sure the first school we should do it would be at Moleso Elementary. I'd rather look at the, the, the big schools, right? Uh, and so we would propose, in our discussions, we've talked about in the same way GPA phased in this migration, we would phase, we would propose that we phase in this migration with John and his schools to, to really, you know, get the biggest bang for the buck sooner rather than later, uh, to, to get those savings that everyone in this room, uh, wants to get. So, so when we talk about, and I appreciate Senator Rogel, you know, how much will you save this? When? Um, I think it'll start, you'll save a little bit in the beginning, and then you'll, and then you'll start to save more and more as we add more and more schools with, with solar. Uh, but until Jeff and Bill Hagan and, and that industry can bid, we're all speculating as to what the, the savings will be. Uh, and you need that number every year for the budget, but let's let the process go through. Their struggle is the tax credits are going away. Some of the, the numbers you hear about now may not be the same numbers you hear about when they bid because the tax credit i- is going away. So if we do it in phases and we work with John and DOE's team, we, we, I'm very confident we can do this. We, we're the only group at this table that's ever bought, bought a PPA for solar. Trust us, we, we know how to do it. We're getting great prices. We're getting great prices with storage, and we're beating Speaker Ben's deadline by 14 years. That's the kind of success we think we, our expertise can bring to your goal and John's goal of reducing the power bill at DOE. We're happy to help. Frankly, I've been cringing since 2013, seeing all these bills pass that excluded GPA. So
Thank you, Simon.
We'd love to participate if you'll allow us.
Just, just one, uh, one question real quick. Mr. Beneventi, if GPA was to procure, uh, for DOE, what would be the cost for DOE having to pay GPA for this level of expertise?
For the services?
Correct.
If the procurement is done through GPA, then it really, there's no cost to, uh, to the Guam DOE. Because now, if the procurement is outside of that, we're, okay, consultation, minor consultation and stuff, of course, but not, not the extent of the, of what I'm, I'm see
So we're not going to see a $30,000 bill for GPA consultation to DOE?
No, maybe it goes to GPA. If we're the ones that procure, we're using our resources. There's no real, there's no cost.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming here today. There will be some discussions on how we can make this work. We'd like to see GPA and GDOE, uh, work in the best interests of the whole island of Guam, right? And we don't want to have this, uh, other rate payers pay for this kind of, uh, transition. So, uh, we will still move forward with the bill. Uh, we just, we'll tweak it a little bit to make sure that both parties are in agreement in this, and then the people are not affected. Um, I'd like to thank everyone for coming today. That exhausts our items for this public here.
Why, Speaker, can I just say something?
Miss, Miss, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, we have to, we have, we are short on time. It is now 12:11. This is adjourned. Thank you, Madam Chair.